All right. Good evening, everybody. It is 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the City Council meeting to order. It is April 10th. Will you all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. To roll call, I see Councilman Loy is on line. Councilwoman Kestie?
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Present.
Councilman Henderson?
Here.
Councilman Cock?
Present.
And Councilman Burns?
Present.
And Councilman Lavaca?
Present.
Okay. So before we move into the approval of the agenda, Kelly, we just have a question for you. We know that this is a revised agenda that we're working with, but just in case we may have missed not knowing what all was changed, do you want to maybe just address that for us?
Yes. Good evening, council. We had a request to include an additional executive session to discuss with legal counsel about current or potential litigation. When we added that in, we noticed we had missed two sentences on consent agenda item number five. On that item, on the cover page, we include information about our recent payroll cycle, so the checks in that payroll cycle and the total of that. There's no additional attachments or information other than the two additional sentences on the consent or on the cover sheet documenting the cost of payroll the last cycle.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions regarding that? Okay, good. Thank you, Kelly, for doing that. Moving on then to the approval of the agenda, and before we do, I have just a couple things. First, Nicole Rusin, who is going to be here to present the Tulip Festival poster. She had unexpected circumstances arose, so she is not able to be here tonight, but she will be here at the next meeting on the 24th. So if we can add her to the 24th, that'd be great. Thank you, Kelly. And the second thing is moving public comment to below new business. So we have a hefty schedule, and I'm thinking if there's anybody who wants to make public comment regarding the business that we're going to be discussing, that might be a more appropriate time for them to actually have questions asked and answered. So if that's okay with everybody. I am looking for an approval of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Onto the consent agenda, items one through 11. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to pull item number nine for discussion.
Item number nine, okay. The mutual... Okay, so before we move on then, the agreement here, is that yours, Mark? Item number nine? Okay. Do you want to address that? Do you have a question?
I just have a specific question for you, Mark, or maybe it'd be for Kelly about the administrative costs. So the county's bumping theirs up from nine to 15, and so are we just going to match that and go from nine to 15 ourselves?
Well, we would have to do an audit to determine what our rate is, but I'm assuming we will push forward with something like that. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. So answer some questions. Any other?
If I may, it looked like it wasn't due until 2025. Or is this something that we have to change right now? Because the agreement goes until 2025 unless they're basically... Or trying to modify it right now.
So what's going on with this is the county is finding that they just don't have the capacity to do some of the things that we've partnered on in the past. The things that, in particular, are the chip sealing program, which we've taken advantage of their crew availability in past years to do our chip seals. It informed us, well, last year, they actually didn't finish the entire list of projects that were planned, and so we deferred those to this year. And when we scheduled them for this year, this came up, well, we have to increase your administrative fee. So, and the option is, is we just don't use them to do that. It will cost us between four and six times as much to go out on the private market and do that. So even with this administrative fee increase, we're much better off to partner with the county, and they have agreed they will work it in for us this year if we do increase the administrative fee.
Yeah, I saw that Nate was recommending that too and pointed out that it was a substantial increase for that same project, up to 120. Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, moving on. So consent agenda, items one through 11. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Cock. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Moving into the special guest presentation with the Tulip Festival poster on hold. I think what we will do is have John Gossem come forward, please. All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand. I, John Gossem?
I, John Gossem.
Do hereby declare?
Do hereby declare.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Washington?
The Constitution of the State of Washington.
And that?
And that.
As a member of the City of Sejro Woolley Fire Department?
As a member of the?
City of Sejro Woolley.
City of Sejro Woolley Fire Department.
My fundamental duty?
My fundamental duty.
Is to serve the people I swear to protect?
Is to serve the people I swear to protect.
To safeguard and preserve life?
To safeguard and preserve life.
Health and property against fire?
Health and property against fire.
And other perils?
And other perils.
And to maintain?
And to maintain.
A proficiency in the fire service?
A proficiency in the fire service.
I recognize the badge of my office?
I recognize the badge of my office.
As a symbol of public faith and trust?
As a symbol of public faith and trust.
And I accept, so long as I am true?
And I accept, so long as I am true.
To the ethics of the fire service?
To the ethics of the fire service.
And make these promises?
And make these promises.
So solemnly, freely?
So solemnly, freely.
And upon my honor?
And upon my honor.
Very nice. Congratulations. Congratulations, John.
Thank you.
Very good.
I just want to know whether there'll be cake for us?
Bring the cake. All right, those are always nice. Moving on to the city administrator report to begin with, I think we'll start with you, Mark. The Public Works update?
Well, not too much to report on tonight other than we have a number of projects under design. We will be coming to council in the near future to talk about authorization to advertise for bids for the 2024 pavement and preservation project.
Okay. Is there any update in the intersections and fieldwork? Or does that pretty much sum it up?
Yeah, I believe so. We'll be talking in exec session about right of way for the Township McGargle project. Did you want me to mention about the other matter as well?
Yeah.
So the other matter at hand tonight was a request from one of our citizens about how we handle right-of-way mowing in terms of the BNSF right-of-way through the town. We have a couple of different situations on that. We have the right-of-way along Highway 20 where the tracks parallel Highway 20 coming into town that we've been mowing for at least 30 years there to keep the brush down, basically for visibility purposes, fire prevention, and generally to keep, you know, the entrance to the city looking decently. That's been a longstanding practice. BNSF has had no objection to that over the years. And so that's the story on that. We have the abandoned, or at least the inactive, right-of-way. Two different pieces of that. We have the east-west section from basically the old Skagit plant at Metcalf out to 400 feet east of Township Street that used to have a track on it. BNSF removed that track about 10 years ago, something like that, most of that. They left out a piece of it. They left a piece in from Township to the east to where the paved Cascade Trail starts that the county actually owns from that part on out. But the right-of-way, the rest of the right-of-way remains BNSF right-of-way. After they removed the tracks, we graded out the ballast that they left behind and put a little top rock on it so it would be a pathway that people could walk on. And that's, and we mow on the sides of that occasionally to keep the grass and the brush down like we talked about before. So that's been the practice for, I guess, most of the time that I've been here. And before that, they were mowing the sides of it as well, again, for keeping the brush down and things like that. Then there's the piece that runs north and south, which ties into the old Skagit River Bridge, comes up through the county to Jamison. From Jamison to the north, it basically is still BNSF right-of-way. To the south, that was actually deeded over to the private property owners adjacent to that. The county has the section of it that's just south of Jamison Street. Then from Jamison to the north, up to about Ferry Street, it remains BNSF right-of-way. And some years back, the track was removed on that and the street crossing, the old cross buck equipment was removed from Ferry Street. And we worked with BNSF to remove the remaining trackage in there and graded that out, again, just for maintenance purposes, to keep the brush down and things like that. So we haven't gone any farther with that in terms of a formal agreement with BNSF, but we've obviously been working with them on that over the years. They've had no objections to us doing those things. So that's where we stand on that.
All right. Thank you, Mark. And then a community development grant program update?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Counsel, good evening. So we received eight additional grant applications before the deadline on the 31st. And I put some of this in the weekly update, but I wanted to repeat it here as well. So if we funded everything, we'd be $31,000 beyond the budget that we have allocated to the grant program. We're still in the vetting process with these grants, going through them. And I'm looking at the 24th, so our next meeting in two weeks, to bring those forward to you. So that's an update on the grant program. And then I have one last thing tonight, which is just an update on the HR proposal. So we had the HR manager discussion at the last study session last week. We heard the council loud and clear on that, that you were not interested in supporting that position at this time. So we are working on a revised proposal to bring forward a half-time HR analyst and to then supplement that with additional consultant funding. And we have money in the budget to do both things, but we'd be bringing that back to you in a budget amendment. The goal with a half-time HR analyst would be to pull work out of the union that's confidential, make sure we've got another resting place for that, and to move forward, again, with additional consulting help. So just wanted to give an update on that, so there are no surprises when we come back, hopefully in a couple of weeks on that.
All right. Thank you, Charlie. And I don't know, Chief Dan, if you wanted to address drug takeback? And I know you have a report in here, too. Is there anything that you wanted to bring forth?
If I may say something about drug takeback? If you like. Drug takeback day is here at City Hall, April 27th. So I was going to cover that next council meeting as the next reminder. But 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM here. Just collecting any unwanted or unused prescription drugs and dropping off and disposing them properly.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to council report, I'll start with you. I'll begin with you. Councilman Loy, do you have anything to report tonight? You're muted? Thank you.
I apologize.
No worries. It's okay.
I just want to let everybody know I'm still working on our skateboard competition, and I'll have something solid to report the first of the month. And it has been set for August 17th, but I should be able to give a full report the first of the month.
All right. Thank you. And on to you, Councilwoman Kestie. Anything to report? Nothing tonight? Thank you. Councilwoman Diamond?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Just that I've had continued complaints about speeding around the Township Ferry and State Street areas. There must be somebody new in town that has an extra-loud car, because I've been hearing it a lot, so. But just looking for, hopefully in the future, doing some traffic control in there by way of a four-way stop and those crossings for the crosswalk there for the Cascade Trail. I'd be interested to bring that up at our next Public Works committee meeting, so.
All right.
Madam Mayor, we did just put the radar car out there today to, you know, kind of assess some speeds and do a speed study. Near northern, northern Township, catching the speed going southbound.
Appreciate it, Chief. Thank you very much.
Since we were talking about speeding out in front on Murdoch, I noticed right after school, when the kids are kind of crossing out, the high school kids are coming this way, there's a lot of speeding going on in front of there. And it's just kind of around that corner, we could take a left. What's that street? Not Murdoch, but this one. No.
The one that comes out by the coffee place and Woods Logging?
Post office?
Yeah.
No, in front of the post office, like if you take a left.
Oh, Woodworth?
Woodworth, thank you.
Oh, okay.
Woodworth. It's really right there at that sidewalk. They're just like... So I decided to tell you about that one, too.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So also from the engineering perspective, I've had... David Lee is doing an analysis on the intersection there to see if we meet the warrants required to put a three-way stop in there. Actually, the street to the east is a private driveway. And we can't just put a stop sign in when we think, you know, one is warranted. We have to go through an engineering analysis, and he is doing that. He'd actually prepared one before COVID hit. There was a similar question back at that time. It never was finalized because of all of that stir-up. But he had most of the data, so he should be able to report that by the time we meet with the council, Public Works Committee, and we'll see how that goes. Again, it's an engineering call on that kind of thing when we add those things.
Okay, thank you. And I believe with the car, wasn't it also addressed that it will give us an analysis of the percentage? How many people are actually speeding over X amount, doing 35 or greater? It kind of gives us a better assessment of how many cars are actually speeding?
It'll create a speed study. I'll share that with council and one of the reports coming up here in council, and I'll try to do the other direction as well.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. Okay. Councilman Cock?
I have a couple of things. Couple of weeks ago, I attended a very nice event, luncheon and presentation up at Cascade's Job Corps at Northern State. And it was part of the 60-year anniversary of the National Job Corps, which, you know, trains young people. And up there now, during the COVID, they were pretty much shut down, but now they have 200 young people up there, and they're heading toward a maximum of 300. And some of the programs include advanced computer, clinical medical assistant, computer technician, medical administration, security, and culinary arts, which we all enjoyed, because it was a great luncheon. Took a tour of the campus, and there was on the tour, and she wasn't part of it. She just was taking a tour, was a young woman who went through Job Corps. And she said she basically, it changed her life, and she's now successful, got her own business. The other thing is that I attended via Zoom an AWC forum on hate speech in public forums at councils across the state. There was a lot of good sharing of information, and quite frankly, we've been fortunate to avoid some of the things they've had to endure. Some of these people have had to endure. The only thing I'll share right now is, and I don't... Maybe Woody would understand this, but several of the tech side people suggested during public comments to use a Zoom webinar. I don't know how that's more helpful. But they're going to be summarizing the findings and sharing them, so that should be very helpful.
Yeah, my understanding of the Zoom webinar was that Woody would have control over who could talk and who could not talk.
Okay.
So it gives us more control that way. Yeah. Thank you. Very good. I saw you on that webinar. Yep. All right. Thank you, Joe.
I got two things tonight. First, I wanted to thank Kelly for the clarification on the changes there. I don't like voting on anything I haven't read, so I wanted to make sure that it was just something simple and not more in-depth before we got it before the whole council. So I appreciate you doing that. Also, Mark, when you all are talking about stop signs and crosswalks, the strip that I noticed problems with in my area especially is Jamison and Township. You got a nice, long strip with nothing that slows people down, and there's not really many places for people to cross when they're walking with their families. So that's one I would appreciate. I figured that's a main road through the area, so it might be a good spot for one. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Burns. Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, I'd like to request the 24th. Get a motion to take the 24th off. I have something that I'm going to be doing. And then I did get some people from our community just telling me that they appreciate the dialogue that we have as elected officials. We communicate, you know, it's civil in that there is dialogue there, and that is pretty cool and pretty appreciated. So I thought that was cool, and I tend to agree with that very much so. I did want to mention the parks you had mentioned. I was going to talk about it anyways, but the Job Corps has about 200 to 300 kids up there up at the Swift Center, and then we have the Northern State Recreation Area. I did contact the county, and the Parks and Rec Director over there got back with me and said they are looking to pull two of the buildings down, but it's kind of a slow go. And, you know, the thing that I would suggest is, you know, we push a lot on safety issues here for sure. You know, even removing tagging from fencing, because we're afraid that the gangs will explode around here. But there is a lot of safety issues up there that are serious, immediate threat to life and health that should be addressed. And if we have 200 to 300 kids roaming around, bored, playing around, tagging up buildings, partying them in them, and they come down or a rafter comes down, it could be tremendous. And so just in my background of safety, I look at that, and it's scary to even have a dog run through there. So I just wanted to point that out there. I think it should be addressed a lot more immediate, and all the buildings should be addressed, fencing or something. I was just wondering if we had any report on taking inventory of our laptops and identifying the ones that are no longer in use, the ones that are in use, and then shutting the ones that are not in use off? And Woody, maybe you can chime into that. Has that happened?
We are still gathering up all the computer resources, and then we are planning on taking appropriate action.
Is there a time? Is there a timeframe that you guys are looking to have that done by? If there's possible computers out there that could be donated to thrift shops or schools or things like that, that could have been somebody's personal laptop?
Woody, do you have a timeframe regarding that?
I'm hoping to have it by the end of May, possibly sooner.
Okay. Good deal. Anything else, Councilman Lavaca?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Couple things. I, too, attended the AWC hijacked by hate speech. It was very good. We will be talking more about this once all the materials come in from AWC. They took notes from all the other cities, and there was a lot of good information shared, and we'll be able to share that with you. And I want to thank Councilman Cock and Councilman Burns for participating in that. It's great. I also want to congratulate Councilman Joe Burns. He has achieved the AWC CML, which is a certificate of mutual leadership. It is something that all council members are able to do. It is a program by AWC that recognizes mayors and councilmen for accomplishing training in five different competencies. The first is knowledge and efficiency in the operations in law, plan for the future, secure and manage funds, foster strong relationships, and work to build more equitable communities. And I achieved mine when I was a council member, and I see Paul Cock as well on his way to achieving his. And this comes just by attending the meetings and the trainings that they have. And most of them are online, which makes it very convenient. And oftentimes, they're free, but if they're not, we will pay for them. So if you are interested in anything by AWC, a training that you'd like to take, you know, please let us know. We'll get you signed up, and we will get you on the books for that.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question on that? With the AWC, when I first originally went through it, it seemed like it might have been skewed to a certain agenda. They were talking about, unfortunately, the Second Amendment was around, so cities couldn't ban guns, and that was unfortunate. So it had kind of a thing. And then this latest time when I was in there, they talked about their main purpose is to make... Well, one of their main goals is to make it to where the cities can raise property tax 5% without a vote from the constituents. Is it three and a half? So it seems to be like there's this... And that might not be in favor of the constituents. So it seemed like all Washington cities support cities, but the city elected officials support the constituents, and there might be a disconnect. Is that correct? Or I probably would like to do further research on it. But that's something that I have experienced, which kind of turned me off a little bit from it.
Yeah, usually AWC, they will report on the bills that are actually being presented, so they will give a report about what's going on. And sometimes they do encourage certain bills, and sometimes they don't. They'll... But that is up to the city to decide exactly what they want to do just for the reasons that you stated. Every city's different. The constituents have different needs. So... But they just want to put the information out there so that we have it and that we have, you know, power's knowledge, right? So if we know what's going on, then we have the ability to state if we're for or against, you know, really fight for it or really fight against it. So, yeah. Thank you for bringing that up. The third thing that I'd like to mention is I'd really like to thank Paul, Joe, Alan, and Nick for their participation in the directors' interviews for both Public Works and for the Community Director Development. And last, I want to make you aware of the legislative debrief that's going to be happening on April 25th. It'll be from 8:30 to 10:00 AM. They will send you a Zoom link if you cannot be there. If you can, it's going to be at the Burlington Council Chambers. And legislators from the 10th, 39th, and the 40th will be there reporting about the different bills and how successful they were. Bills to be watching out for, bills that don't pass sometimes are brought back again. So anyway, that's all I have tonight. So if you'd like more information on that, I'll be happy to send you any information.
If you wouldn't mind, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Sure. I can do that. Make a note here. Okay. The update is what you want, legislative update? Okay. I'll make sure you get that. Thank you. Moving on, we've pushed public comment down to below new business, so moving on to unfinished business. The first is the amendment to Chapter 1604, the Sejro Woolley Municipal Code Shadow Plating Ordinance Number 207024. Thank you, Nicole. Second read, and action is requested.
Okay. Good evening, council. So, yeah, this is the council's second read of the proposal to include shadow plating within the subdivision code as a method of gradually satisfying the minimum density requirement of four dwelling units per acre. So the recommended amendment says, shown in draft ordinance 207024... amendment says, shown in draft ordinance 207024, are modeled off of Mount Vernon's code language. They're written to allow an applicant to subdivide at under four units per acre density, so long as they submit a shadow plat along with their formal subdivision application that shows the current and proposed development will not preclude the provision of adequate access and, excuse me, infrastructure for future development, and shows the subject property is capable of future subdivision at a density of four units per acre according to current development regulations. I'm personally aware of several members of the community that are interested in this, because it will allow those who are not interested in a full subdivision, whether it be for financial reasons or other burdens, to achieve more reasonable piecemeal development of their properties. And it's also easier for the city to accommodate for more gradual, well-planned growth in this way. So again, this is the second read, so I'm requesting action tonight from the council. Recommendation from myself and the Planning Commission is to move to adopt ordinance 207024, amending Chapter 1604 Seadrively Municipal Code to add a definition for shadow plat and to include shadow plating as a method of eventually satisfying the minimum density requirement of four dwelling units per acre.
All right. Are there any questions for Nicole?
I, I would just like to say I was part of a lengthy Planning Commission discussion on this, and I think it has the benefit of helping landowners who are in certain circumstances gives a little flexibility, and it, the decision on approving each one would be on a case-by-case basis. So I think it helps our citizens.
Yes. I personally, personally am against this. I feel like we've got a couple areas of UGH that haven't been taken advantage of, so if we're looking for density and growth, we still have those opportunities. I also feel like it opens the door completely to allowing developers to come in and purchase those little one, two acre lots from these private property homeowners, and it will completely change the community and the density around it. And I think it would be completely irresponsible of the city to do so. To say that it would only be one or two people is, it would be great, right? But at the end of the day, it's a change in policy, and it's a change of something in, for the long-term, the long-term development of our, our community. And right now, I don't think that that's a good time.
Anyone else?
Yeah. So I'd notice in this, one of the things it was talking about was the, the GMA is designed to reduce urban sprawl, and I don't see how shadow plating would reduce urban sprawl. I, I'm trying to wrap my head around it, and if you could touch in a little on, on how, on how exactly shadow plating would in fact reduce urban sprawl.
It's not so much that shadow plating in itself would reduce urban sprawl. That's what the four units per acre minimum density requirement does. So it's more of an, a way to gradually meet that density requirement. So this just kind of slows the process of, well, infill development. As I was saying, you know, a lot of people will put off these kinds of subdivision projects just because it is financially, it's, it's a huge thing to take on. So they, they're like, well, I can't afford this right now. So down the line, maybe 10 years, I'll do it. But so it's, it still achieves that four units per acre ask that the GMA has to, to reduce the urban sprawl. But in itself, it doesn't really sway that in any way.
I, I kind of see this as, you know, any, anybody, you know, in the future, you know, long after I'm dead, you know, it, it kind of would take away from anybody's, you know, dream of ever owning like property, you know, and living, living in an area like this, where we are relatively rural. And, and the way that we're growing, just, it kind of, it kind of takes away from, from our charm, from, you know, why we live in Seadrively and not Mount Vernon, you know. So, and then the other thing was infrastructure and, you know, responsible growth that, you know, we're all seeking. I don't, I don't see really a way with as much development as we're having right now. We're already, you know, seriously having to look at a very expensive wastewater plant upgrade. And, you know, I understand that some of the development is going to pay for some of that, but, I mean, we're, we're really, we really have to think pretty hard about this. So that's my thoughts.
Okay.
Nicole, could I ask a question?
Yes. Go ahead, Councilman Loy.
Now, how will this, how will this affect filling in the different spots around, around town where it might, you might be able to fit in two or three houses? What effect does it have on that?
So I suppose it depends on the size of the property, right? So, you know, if, if they've got a decent sized property and you're able to get four or five housing units on it, but they're only interested in doing a few, two or three, they would be able to do that, just showing that there is room for the infrastructure needed for the additional housing later. So I guess the, the infill would just be more piecemeal gradual. That's really all this does.
Okay. Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So to understand, I see how it could be a benefit to private landowner that owns an acre and wants to get a little bit of retirement, a little bit of money on the bank. I don't see how a developer would come in and take advantage of it because they would capitalize the entire property, I would think. So if there's an acre and the landowner that's living on it can't afford to do that, then his only other option, because we're taxing people out of the community, is to up and sell it to the developer, who's then going to plot down four houses. So this might be a way for them to have longevity for the, the, that's just a basic guy who owns an acre or two acres. I do see how, you know, otherwise, we pretty much only allow the developer to develop in our community, and we don't allow our residents to utilize their, their resources that were handed down to them from family. Not that they want to break that up anyways, they want to give it to their kids. Like Councilman Allen said, like, we're pretty sprawled out. I, I'm on a half acre. I wouldn't want to put a house on that half acre, another house, and plot that out. That's, I like my space. But if, if the taxes are so high, it's difficult in this community. If I wanted to get my kid into college or whatever, pay down a bunch of debt, you know, that's an opportunity, or I leave. And so that's where I see the shadow plating. I wish that there was more people that were fighting for us in Olympia to push against this whole densification. So four per plat, I mean, that doesn't make any sense that we're required to, to do that, right? So if, I, I see this as, as a positive for the, for the resident, and it's also something that prevents it just going straight to the cookie cutter development home. I'm going to go around here, I'm going to buy 10 plots that are an acre each, and I'm going to put down 40 homes, and they're just going to be cookie cutter throughout the community. It's a very cheap and expensive way for a developer to make a pretty good chunk of change. This would slow that process, I think.
Councilman Burns?
I have to agree with Councilman Lavaca. I think this is a good idea to allow our constituents to do what they like with their own land, as opposed to telling them, I'm sorry, you just can't build another house there. Sell it to the developer or stay there and enjoy your extra grass. If you want to build another house on your property and you have the size to do it, I see no reason that we should be blocking people from doing so. It makes perfect sense to me that we would allow them to do what they want with their land within reason.
Those are all valid, valid comments. I still stand my ground and will be voting no on this. I drove around town, I looked at a lot of the different lots, and I looked at what would this look like if there were four additional houses behind this one? What would this look like if there were two additional houses behind, behind here? How would this affect the current community? How would this affect these roads? Can these roads be wide? Obviously, we're, we're bound by the infrastructure we have. The school districts are bursting at the seams with the development we currently have. You know, looking at the big picture and the hard reality that, yes, you, you are giving a private property owner, and I fully value the private property owner's rights, but those private property owners bought that property based on its current zoning, and not on the fact that they're going to then purchase that property and shadow plat it to make a buck. You know, we're all in those situations, whether we, you know, own property or intend to own property in the future, is that we have, we have those abilities, but we're still bound by the restrictions, policies, and, and zoning regulations that we purchased that property within. We can always ask, but it doesn't mean the answer's always going to be yes. And so, for me, for the health of the community, for the future, and the community I hope my children grow up in and raise their families in, my answer to this is no.
Madam Mayor, I can definitely see where you're coming from with that. And I don't know that we have the, somebody was just telling me, they asked me to talk about this on the council, I completely forgot about it. But there's the fields, and we talked about this actually, the, the ball fields. And so they said, look, we got 19 Little League teams right now, or T-ball teams. It's just T-ball. They don't have a place to practice. It's tripled since last year. And so that is a very valid point. Like, if we open this up, you know, what we, what we have right now, where there's not development in those areas, it, it would increase at least four, like you said, and then it would open the door for, for many more, probably. It seems like this is something that we could revisit in two years, five years, something like that, and just see where we're, where we are with that as far as our growth cycle. We do see a lot of apartments going up, we see a lot of construction, and then we also see where our, our borders are pretty much pressed against. And so annexing out, annexing out might be a solution. But yeah, right now, we are pretty, pretty pressed. So I do see where you're coming from with that.
Could I add something? I, I didn't get the impression, at least during Planning Commission and then presentation here, we had a gentleman, I couldn't remember, I can't remember his name, I'm sorry for that. But he's retiring, and part of his property is a farm, and he just wants, he just is handcuffed by the current zoning to do anything with it. So it's what you're saying, he could either sell it to a developer, but he's retiring. He can't farm anymore. I, I just think on, especially given the oversight of, on a case-by-case basis, I, I, I just think it's a good idea, but will the council will determine that.
Well, the, the other part of that is what, what, what was this property zoned for? And when we talk about four, we're talking about a minimum of four, right?
Correct.
Like R, R4, there's no R1 anymore, right? That's out the window.
Right. So each residential zone, right? So if you have R5, your minimum residential density in all zones is four units per acre. R5, your maximum is five units per acre. R7, your maximum is seven. R15, 15. Yes, good job.
So with that, is there a motion on the table?
I'd motion to table this and revisit it in the future when we can get a better grasp of this. And, you know, I mean, we still have people, case-by-case basis, you know, even tonight, coming in for, you know, a rezone from that. So based on our infrastructure right now, our, our schools, everything, I'd, I'd say we, I'd make a motion to table this and bring it back at a later date.
And then Nicole, at that time, would you be able to maybe bring some people in too, to discuss that? So I'd be, I'd be down to table it and, and see how it goes, and see if, you know, where we are with our schools, our fire department, things like that, police, and see where our infrastructure is sitting.
Sure, yeah. Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Henderson to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Question on timeline that you're expecting for bringing this back?
Me? Are you asking me?
You're the one who made the motion, so yes.
Okay. I'd say at least, at least six months, let's, you know, really study this. That'd be October.
It's more than reasonable. I was actually thinking a year or more, but I think six months is reasonable. So, yeah.
How much time did the, did the Planning Commission spend on this? It seems to me there was a lot of discussion spent on this.
Three meetings worth.
About six hours then, in all?
I would say so, yeah. The way the code was written, it was, I took it from Mount Vernon's code language, so it was, I just kind of, you know, switched up a few words to make it Seadrively, but that's essentially how it went. So they were, they were happy with how it was written, so it was, it went through the process pretty, pretty smoothly. Yeah. Out of curiosity, would the council be interested on having community workshops, something like that, to get community feel for this a little bit better?
I absolutely would be. And, and some of our council retreats and some of our other workshops kind of seem like they're filled with nothing coming from the community. So, I mean, we want to hear from our constituents. We want to hear, you know, all, all the stakeholders, we want to hear their voice.
So, go ahead.
Just my two cents, out of the respect for the Planning Commission and the people who are wanting to know whether or not this is going to be something and not continuing down six months, two years, I'd rather put forth a motion to either, you know, confirm or deny this, out of respect for the people who've already put in the work.
Well, the motion on the table, or, yeah, on the table, is to table the motion. There were no dates set, so...
I've put a motion to table it for six months out.
Henderson made the motion.
Oh, I thought you said no date was set.
I'd amend that till October. That's...
Okay. Table. To October of this year, 2024. All right, well, let's get a vote on this then. So we have a motion by Councilman Henderson, seconded by Councilman Lavaca, to table the motion to put forth Ordinance 207024, amending 1604 of the Seadrively Municipal Code Shadow Plating until October 24th, bringing it back on October 24th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. And those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
To tabling it?
Yeah, I'd rather, I would like to make a motion to vote on it tonight.
Okay. Well, okay, so, so you are, okay, let me, okay, those who would like to see it tabled?
No.
I'm willing to table it.
You are willing? Okay. Councilman Loy? I, I, you have to end mic. Councilman Loy?
I'm sorry. Table it, please.
Table it? Okay, so you are a yes. Henderson's a yes. Councilman Cock?
I'm a no.
Okay. Burns?
No.
And Lavaca?
Yes.
Okay. With a count of four to three to table it until October 24th, the motion put forth by Councilman Henderson carries. Okay, moving on to the second item of unfinished business, the Benson Rezone, RZ2023004. This is Ordinance 2017-24 and Ordinance 207324. This is the second read, and action is requested. Nicole.
Mayor, if I could jump in really quick and just confirm, council is still under the obligation to ensure that no ex parte communications have occurred. I ran through the Appearance of Fairness colloquy last meeting, and I just want to make sure that nothing has changed with any of the council members since that time.
Thank you, Nikki. Has anything changed with any of the council members? Do, do you want her to run through it again? Would that be helpful?
Sure.
Okay, Councilman. Okay, perfect. Happy to do that. So does any member of this council
have any knowledge of or have conducted business with either the proponents or the opponents of this rezone?
No.
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 Does any member of this council either have a pecuniary or nonpecuniary interest in the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
No.
Does any member of this council know whether or not their employer has a financial interest in the property?
No.
No.
Does any member of this council live or own property within 300 feet of the area which will be impacted by the decision?
No.
No.
Does any member of this council have any special knowledge about the substance of the merits of this proceeding, which would or could cause the council member to prejudge the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
Is there any member of this council who believes that he or she... Is there any member of this council who believes that he or she cannot sit and hear this matter fairly and impartially, both as to the respective positions of the proponents and opponents of this proceeding?
No.
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 Has any council member had any ex parte communications regarding this matter?
No.
No.
Is there any member of the audience who, because of the appearance of fairness doctrine, wishes to disqualify any member of council from hearing this matter?
There is no indication anybody is.
All right. Is there any member of council that believes another council needs to recuse themselves because of the appearance of fairness doctrine?
No.
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 All right, feel free to proceed.
All right, thank you.
All right. So this is the council's second read of the proposal to rezone 406 Ball Street from its current R7 zoning to R15. The property is just under an acre in size, it's .85 acres. There's R15 zoning directly adjacent to the property to the north, which has an existing 30-unit apartment complex on it. The other adjacent properties are zoned R7, to the south is a church, and to the east and west are single-family homes. The Planning Commission found this location fitting for a rezone of this nature. In the event the applicant develops the site with multifamily, as he has mentioned his intention is, it would mesh in well with the existing development currently fronting on Ball Street, that being the church and the apartment complex. This would be a mild impact as the property is not large, and the city's infrastructure does have sufficient capacity to handle the additional seven housing units that a rezone would allow for on this property. The rezone would help to edge the city closer to achieving the state's requirement for the city to plan and accommodate for low to middle income housing options for its community where possible. Again, this is the second read, so I'm asking for action from the council tonight, and the recommendation is for a city council to move to adopt ordinances 207124 and 207324, which will effectively approve this rezone proposal and amend the comprehensive plan and zoning map to reflect the change.
Okay, any questions?
I had a question. A nearby homeowner, I think, had raised the issue of there being wetlands on the property. Was that resolved?
So that gets resolved during the permit application process. So what they would do is, at the time of fill-in-grade permit application, when they're starting to, you know, get the lot ready for building permit, before they break ground, they are required to do a critical areas assessment. If we have any reason to believe that there are critical areas on site, so that comment would be one. So they would be required, the applicant would be required to have a critical areas assessment report given to us. We send that through a third-party consultant for their confirmation that the work was done well. Any wetlands found on site would be delineated, and then they have options as far as mitigation to work with, according to the regulated critical areas chapter.
Thank you.
Councilman Lavac?
Go ahead.
So I walk up and down that road, I used to live on Nelson, and then you got the youth center there, the YMCA, and then the new park nearby, which is pretty cool. Just envisioning it, it looks like it's the right spot for a seven unit. We got a lot of apartments going on, so when you think apartments, you think huge sectors of like Trail Road or whatnot. But it does fit for that area if that's what the intent is, and if that's what the landowner hopes to do. I don't have any objections to it.
Okay, thank you.
I just, I have a question. So this is the second action of business tonight, and the concept of resolving GMA shortcomings has come up. What exactly are we short on as a whole, as a city? We've sat, I've sat up here for three years, and we've never been told that we should be doing this stuff because of GMA shortcomings. I just would like some clarification on that.
Yeah, so the state is pushing for cities to accommodate for low to middle income housing, remove barriers to that. So the more areas where we find you can create density within the current zones is something that edges us more to that goal. So as part of the comprehensive plan update process, we're probably going to have to look at our current zoning and see where those barriers lie. But this is, this is a way we can kind of edge toward creating those low to middle income housing opportunities for people where they don't exist now.
Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, so on the, on the low to middle income, and this isn't directed at you, but, or maybe you can answer it, do you know how much those units are going to be rented out for?
No idea.
So they could be renting them out for 2,500 bucks apiece, and, you know, we say we're putting in, you know, low-income housing, or, you know, this term everybody uses affordable I'm not, I'm not beaten up on the, on the proposal, but to state that this is going to be satisfying our low to middle income housing is, it's almost comical to me. I mean, I almost want to laugh because all these apartment buildings that are going up, have you looked and seen how much they're renting these units out for?
It's scary.
It's incredibly scary, and just slamming at a bunch of apartment buildings, slamming at a bunch of units that are only rentals, what, that doesn't give anybody who's moving to this area pride of ownership of a home. It actually will keep prolonging them to be in a state of rental forever, because they're paying these high rents on these apartment buildings. It's a great model if you want to get rich. I mean, I wish I could do it, but it's not, these aren't low to middle income units, so I don't think that that, I think that that should be stricken from this proposal, that sentence right there, because it's not going to be that, and we all know it. And that wasn't directed at you, that's directed at, you know, the people who are putting these units in and saying that they're trying to give low to middle income, not affordable.
If nobody else has anything to say, I'll say one more thing. I just hate hearing about how we have to accommodate Olympia on everything we do. Like if we're just looking at our community, which is what I look at, and I'm walking up and down, I look at it kind of like you, I'm looking at the houses and the neighborhoods and what makes sense and what's nice, but I don't like the fact that we're being driven in a certain way by Olympia. I don't think there's, they're pushing, the state is pushing, it's not saying that they are mandated. And technically, I think Washington is unique, where we actually have constitutional rights in our community, in our county, that the state can't really trump on, but they, they hold the purse strings from us, so that's why we have to accommodate this. If we're just looking at the map, beautifying our community, accommodating residents, accommodating people that are around, that's awesome. But yeah, it is, it is very frustrating, and I tend to take all that state stuff with a grain of salt, myself, in my opinion.
All right, if there are another comments?
I just read, I just read an article about a report on finances, and they stated that in the state of Washington, to reach middle class, you have to make $150,000 a year to reach middle class. So it's a tough thing to do.
Okay. Any other comments?
Madam, I was going to make a motion to add section, or not to add section, to rezone the Mendson rezone ordinance 2071-TAC24 and 2073-TAC24.
Is that a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Cock, to approve the Planning Commission's recommendation, ordinance 207124 and 2073-24, which will approve amendments to the comp plan and to, and amendments to the zoning map. All those in favor signify by.
Is there a discussion?
No.
We just had a discussion.
So we made, we made a motion, and then it got seconded, and then now is there a discussion?
Is there something you'd like to add?
Okay, yeah, I would. So one of the things I've noticed going through all of these meetings is that when we set a precedence for something, it always gets turned around and pointed back at us, saying, you guys did this, or you guys did that. You have to approve all the community development grants, because if they meet the stipulations, yeah, you guys had the final say, but we set a precedence, right? So I just want to go on the record by saying that if we vote yes to approve this, that doesn't mean that everyone who wants to rezone to high density, because we all spoke as a council at our retreat, and, and one of the major takeaways towards the very end was, we all want to minimize high density as much as possible. And I believe, Madam Mayor, you even agreed with that, too. So it's very important that we're not just setting precedents here, that if we do vote to push this through, that every other property owner isn't just going to come running in and saying, hey, we want 15 units too. That's all I have to say.
That's awesome. Thank you very much for pointing.
Councilman Burns?
Just clarification on my statements at that meeting. I do not want a lot of high density together. If we're going to do it, mix it up, have it mixed in neighborhoods, I don't want blocks and blocks of apartments as far as the eye can see. That's just not who we are.
I also drove past this property, and it does seem to fit with the surroundings when you were, like you were, others were talking about. It's, there's a church, and then, isn't there another apartment complex? But it's not a huge one, it's kind of smallish.
30 units.
Yeah, so I think it's, it fits the neighborhood, at least in my opinion.
Yeah, I do think you're right about the precedence and being careful with that. This does fit in an individual setting, so.
So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So four approve, and three oppose. If I heard this correctly, Councilwoman Kestie, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm opposing.
Okay. And Councilman Loy, was that correct?
Correct.
Okay, you're opposed. And who was the third?
I was.
Okay, Diamond, okay. All right, thank you. So four approve the motion, helping it to carry, three oppose, Councilwoman Kestie, Councilwoman Diamond, and Councilman Loy. Okay. Good discussion, thank you. All right. Thank you, Nicole. Are you on, on the next one as well? Ooh, this is the Nicole McGowan night, huh?
I'm in the spotlight.
All right. Amendments to Chapter 17.24, the Seadruly Municipal Code. Minimum commercial retail floor area in the CBD, ordinance 206724. Again, a second read and action is requested.
Okay. Again, this is the council's second read of the proposal to amend Chapter 1724 to add a minimum commercial retail floor area requirement for first-floor area facing primary street frontage in the CBD. Currently, the zoning regulations for the CBD do not include any such requirements, so we're facing conversions of viable commercial space to residential in a zone where the primary intention is commercial and retail use. So to prevent deviation from a good balance between commercial and residential space here, staff in the Planning Commission recommended that these amendments, recommended these amendments to require that a minimum of 50% of the first-floor area facing primary street frontage must be designated for commercial retail use. It's also been clarified that garage space does not count toward commercial space, and parameters have been placed on the size and location of main entrances to multifamily residential units to prevent viable commercial space from being overtaken by non-commercial use. So during the council's first read of this matter, one council member did question whether the 50% requirement was sufficient. I am willing to consider a higher minimum requirement, and go back to Planning Commission with that, but there are some things to note. While a minimum 50% requirement allows for more flexibility in development, potentially attracting a wider, more diverse range of businesses, especially for startup businesses, service-oriented establishments, and smaller enterprises, it also allows for less costly development for developers to comply with code regulations. If you have a higher requirement, it would ensure a stronger commercial presence that could potentially attract more pedestrian activity, but I do have concerns about adding on constraints to potential occupants of those commercial spaces. If we increase it beyond 50%, we likely run into issues where the current building does not meet the requirement. Any change of use would require the building to be brought up to code, which I feel may turn potential occupants away, when they learn of the costs of doing so. Upping the minimum requirement beyond 50% may exacerbate the issue of unoccupied commercial spaces and would add to our list of existing nonconforming uses that would need to be rectified. So again, this is the second read, so I'm asking for action from the council tonight. The recommendation is to move to adopt ordinance 206724 to amend Chapter 1724 to add a minimum commercial retail floor area requirement for first-floor area facing primary street frontage in the CBD.
All right, any questions for Nicole?
Yeah, somewhere in there it said you were concerned about it's, the commercial area is shrinking. What buildings is the commercial area shrinking? I find it, I don't understand which, which buildings are shrinking, the commercial area is shrinking.
There are two on Metcalf Street, I struggle to remember exactly which, I see so many permits on a daily basis. But what's been happening is there, there may be commercial space being underutilized or not utilized at all, where, you know, someone will come in and they request to do a remodel, so they apply for their building permit application. There's no requirement in place right now to prevent them from increasing that residential space in the back. So they could decrease that commercial space to 300 square feet, and there's nothing I can say to prevent them from doing that. So we want to be able to put those parameters in place, so that way we don't see further and further remodels and things like that, because, you know, it's unfortunate, but people do take advantage where they can in those kinds of situations.
I was also part of a lengthy Planning Commission discussion on this, and it seems like the, the one strongest advantage of it is it tends to protect our commercial area. Is that right?
Correct.
Thank you.
I still feel that with, with nothing in place, something is going to be better. And if we, if we lose that downtown to, you know, residential housing, I mean, it's not going to look, it's not going to look nice to have, you know, apartments all throughout the downtown. I can see, I can't really see that happening from communities that I've been to in the past, but I don't know, without that in there, it would just look very unsightly. So we do want something in place. If it's, I would, you know, I would venture to say not having any in the CBD. I mean, even, I went up to the place that, by McDonald's, and I walked around there, and none of the businesses underneath are done. They're still very much under construction. And I mean, I was up there seven, eight months ago, walked around, they were in the same, almost the same condition. So, yeah, we should probably look into that.
Does this impact at all or address the issue of organizations coming in, such as a church, and using the space, or even a business coming in and just using it wholly and solely for office space?
Doesn't affect that, no. So long as their use that they're requesting does fit under the permitted uses of that zone, there's nothing preventing them from going in there.
Thank you.
I agree that something is better than nothing, that we need to protect our commercial space. I was, I was advocating at the last meeting that this was discussed, that we push harder on the 75%. You know, we have to allow the 10% for entryway and all of that stuff from ground floor up, but otherwise, we're, we're just sitting here allowing for additional residential, and we still are struggling with our economic development and the tax dollars to come in and the, the, I mean, the, yes, you've got heads here, but where are these, where are these people going to work? Where are they spending their money? What are, what are we doing? Because we're still having to go out to lift levy for the, for the fire department. Until we get some sort of healthy economic status in our community that can, that can help to, to pay for itself, then we're continuing to add all of this and push on and allow for residential, 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 in high density. residential, residential, residential in high density without justification, in my opinion. So I would be more apt to be a little bit stronger in supporting commercial and pushing for 75 as opposed to 50. But again, something's better than nothing.
If there's no other discussion, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. Sir, a second.
Madam Mayor, if I may, ask one more question. On that 75 that Councilwoman Diamond proposed, did you take that back to them at all to figure out? I understand where your, were your concerns based on 75 or 100%? And how do you feel about 75% commercial space? I would like to make that amendment, if you feel like it would work out.
I'd like to take that to greater discussion before I just jumped in and put that in.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
I do understand that.
Councilwoman Kestie?
So did you discuss that the last time with them?
The 75%?
Mm-hmm.
No. So working through this first, you know, if I get a denial, I can take it back to Planning Commission with the 75% and then bring that back to you.
Because maybe I was just not hearing it right, because I thought the last time we had all kind of leaned more towards a heftier 60, 75%, and that you were going to take that back and then come back with us. So I guess this kind of just seems like a waste of time, hearing it again and then coming back. But I agree with Sarah. I would like to see it heavier as well.
So do we need to shoot this down in order for you to talk to the Planning Commission and then come back with a 75% number or a higher number for commercial space?
I'm willing to withdraw my motion and make a new motion that this be tabled and sent back to the Planning Commission with discussion on more than 50% up to 75%.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Councilman Cocke and second by Councilman Burns. To table the motion, send it back to the Planning Commission for a discussion to increase from 50% to 75% of the floor plan. Does that work?
That works.
Okay. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I have one more question, mixed commercial use, if that's okay?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is there a timeline that you have to have a commercial business down below in mixed commercial use?
No.
So in theory, you could own an apartment complex in mixed commercial use, and that commercial space could be vacant, but it pays for itself in units up above, not contributing back into the economy.
Correct.
Is there any way we can look at having some sort of timeline placed on that? I realize that that's going to be flexible within business structures and commercial structures, but we want to also encourage the commercial space to be used properly rather than being set vacant, having the complete building paid for in and of itself in residence and not actually being used as mixed commercial.
Could look into the possibilities and potential code regulations for that. I think it would be good to incentivize.
At least for discussion.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I can, I feel like I've seen it in the past where, like, storefronts are going dormant, and the owners are just holding it in different communities. So what they did is they imposed a fine. If it's vacant for over 90 days or 120 days, then the owner actually has to start paying a fine on that. Not a substantial, not crippling, but something, and that's going to incentivize them to get a business in there, even if they have to lower rent, just so they're not getting that fine. That might be something that we might look at.
Do you recall where you've seen that jurisdiction-wise?
That was Oakland. It was a big one, a much bigger city, of course, but.
Yeah, I'd be happy to look into that.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Burns?
I should have said this before we voted, so apologies, everyone, but I do have the one concern of, if we raise it to 75%, just looking at the buildings that are down there, if we're going to cost the people a whole ton of money if they change anything about it, then that will pose other difficulties that we might have to consider as well. So I just want to keep that in mind if we can.
This will be in place, just to clarify, is this in place after, so people who are already using the building say it's not 50%?
Correct, yeah. So essentially, what would happen is those that don't meet the requirement, say, we put it to 75%, those that don't meet that become existing nonconforming uses. And until you have some kind of use that would require permitting under the current code, so say it's a change of use and we need to do a building permit for that.
Okay.
They would have to.
Like if a new business went in or something like that?
Exactly, yeah. The only way to not go that route is to apply for a conditional use permit application, which those are costly. You have to go through a hearing examiner to get those approved. It's not a guarantee. So people tend to edge away from that, so just note that.
Thank you.
I believe from our last discussion, you were saying that there's really not that many businesses down there that are utilizing, hey, I'm going to have residential units on the ground floor of my business. You know, I don't think we're that desperate for housing. If I look up at Swift, there's empty houses all over the place, actually, that just rot away. So I don't know that we're that desperate to give up our whole, it's only the Central Business District that we're discussing.
Right.
And so, yeah.
Frankly, I do think that 75% would be reasonable. I just had to go through the correct process to get this through council to take it back. So, yeah, I'd be happy to take it back and discuss 75%. And, yeah, like you said, there's three that I can think of that have remodeled to bring their commercial space a little lower than I would have liked, but it brought red flag in my mind, and I'm like, you know, if this is what they're doing now, how much more, you know, you give them an inch, they'll take a mile. So that was the intention here. So anyway, I'll take it back and be back with the new amendment regulations to present.
All right. Thank you, Nicole. Thank you. Sounds like an exciting game happening behind us in Tesseract Field. All right, some exciting news now under new business. We have a couple confirmations. The first is confirmation and employment agreement for Public Works Director William Bullock. And Charlie, you're going to lead us through this?
Yes.
And welcome, welcome, Mr. Bullock.
Yes, Mr. Bullock.
Thank you for having me.
Mr. Bullock is online tonight.
He is online.
I'm going to turn it over to him.
Yep, he's here.
Just a moment, but he is Mayor Johnson's nominee for Public Works Director. I just wanted to take a moment to cover the process a little bit, and then I will turn it over to Bill, and he'll provide a little bit of background about himself and then be open for questions. So Bill is our pick to replace Mark Freiberger. The way that we've set this up, he would start May 1st, so we'd have about eight weeks of overlap. We did have three finalists for the position, and we had panels that did the interviews. We had the senior management team as one of those. We had the mayor, city administrator, and members of the city's public works committee, city council's public works committee is another. And we also had staff from the public works department involved as well. He was the top pick from that interview process. We had two candidates. We had a really close process that we went through after that, the mayor and I trying to kind of pick between the two, but Bill did win the interview process. And then, just transitioning to Bill a little bit, he brings 30 years of public works experience. He's got a ton of experience. He's currently the city engineer for Mount Vernon, but he has also served a long list of communities that I provided to you here. He's worked for counties as well. And his background, specifically, is traffic engineering, but he's done projects like wastewater plant expansions in numerous places. So we feel he's a really good fit for our projects that we have coming forward for the city. He's also got a master's degree in public administration. His references spoke highly of his management skills overall. And in terms of pay, we would start him at step six, which is, step six of grade 133, which is the public works director grade, and he would receive three months of severance, which is consistent with all the other directors if he were to be involuntarily separated without cause. The way it works with hiring directors is they have an employment agreement. That's how that separation language all plays out, as well as the pay and other benefits that they receive. So there's a copy of the agreement as well in the packet, and you're not only, if you choose to vote this way, confirming Mr. Bullock for the position of public works director, but also authorizing the mayor to enter into that employment agreement. So we can bring him on board to start May 1st. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bullock to talk a little bit more about himself and share more details, and then to talk with you all, and I'm here to help in whatever way I can.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me. Just excited to get started with the Cedar Woolley team. One of the very attractive things about Cedar Woolley is you have several key projects that will positively impact the community, such as the John Lainer Road, Jones Road corridor project, the new treatment plant that's been talked about a little bit this meeting, but also the development of the transportation element and the rest of the comprehensive plan that is due to get developed by all the Skagit communities in 2025. So I have a wide range of experience with all those types of things. So again, they're exciting projects, impactful projects, and it's a real great community, so.
Okay. All right.
Other than that, I'm just excited to start.
Are there any questions for Mr. Bullock?
Madam Mayor, I have a question for the interviewers that were part of the process, just to see what the people on the council who interviewed and then what they thought.
Okay. That would be Councilman Cocke and Councilman Henderson who were a part of that?
Yes, we were, I was impressed with the finalist, and I thought he brings a lot of experience, knowledge about some, many of the projects that we have going forward. I think he's also a PE, professional engineer, which is, I didn't know that allows us to do in-house design, which I imagine saves a little money. So I think it's a great hire and welcome to the city.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I was also a part of the interview process. Mr. Bullock was by far, stood out to me. He interviewed really well, but what was more important than that was a lot of the projects that I know that he's been a part of with the city of Mount Vernon, and he's going to be an excellent addition. The other thing I noticed was with the other interview groups, he was the foremost choice, and Mr. Freiberger gave his recommendation as well, and that's, I trust that opinion more than anyone else's.
Okay. Anyone else? Any comments?
I thank you very much for that. And then, just lastly, one last question on our community. You've been through it, you're very familiar with it, obviously. I see that. And is there anything within the community that you find, like, you know, maybe the top two priority things that you see us dealing with right now?
Just from my standpoint of taking a look at things that, of course, again, the John Lainer Jones Road project and that, improving that corridor, the potential, you know, commercial development that could happen on it, as well as the connection of residential community is all very important, very challenging with all the different phases and steps that we need to go through for that. I think probably the pinnacle public works street project that we have planned. Other than that, I mean, Cedar Woolley is a, I call it a medium-sized community that I'm very familiar with being in the area, and just my experience with generally small jurisdictions. Mount Vernon is the largest jurisdiction I've worked for, but with that, I'm very familiar with being, shall we say, kind of a working public works director slash leadership role in all the different communities I've been in with both Squim and Blaine in particular, just that you have to learn, know how to divide and conquer with the resources you have and get good things done for the community that's necessary, that public works departments provide those services for you.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much. Look forward to having you onboard.
Okay. Are there any more questions? Mr. Bullock? If not, I would entertain a motion to confirm William, Bill Bullock, as Public Works Director, and authorize the mayor to enter into an employment agreement with Mr. Bullock.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Councilwoman Kestie?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Kestie, second by Councilman Burns. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay. One opposition, and that is Councilman Loy. Are you approving or?
You approve.
Are you approving or denying?
I'm approving.
All right, thank you. Okay. So all in favor, then. Motion passes with all consenting. All right. Well, welcome, Bill. Looking forward to having you onboard, and this is a good thing. Thank you.
Ms. Brown, thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to confirmation employment agreement for the Community Development Director, Thomas Glover.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, once again. Tom is also online tonight.
Yep.
I'm sure he'll be coming on camera in a minute. I'm going to go ahead and talk about the process, and then I'll turn it over to Tom to talk a little bit more about himself. So as the council is pretty familiar with, we've had a vacancy at the Community Development Director position for just about a year. It's going to be a year in early May. Mr. Glover would start May 1st, so it won't quite be a calendar year, which, assuming the council confirms him, which is good. But the background here, a little bit different and very much the same. We used a very similar process in terms of interview, but we've had a number of candidates and a number of different launches to this recruitment that have occurred. Mr. Glover came in at the end of kind of the last recruitment. We were getting ready to launch another one, and when we saw his application come in, we realized we needed to interview him because he's got great, great background for what we're looking to have him do here. So we had, as I said, similar process. We had the city administrator and mayor, along, in this case, with the Planning and Business Development Committee. We also had the Planning and Building Department, as well as some of the engineering staff that work closely with the Building Department in another panel. And then finally, we had the senior management team and members of the Planning Commission invited as well. So he also went through three panels. He was the only person that we interviewed at that time, but we've interviewed many people over the course of time. I think, yeah, four other individuals in addition to him over the past year. Again, did really well, you know, unanimous choice. Everybody really enjoyed their interview with Mr. Glover, the staff. It's exciting to work with him, as are the directors. And so, you know, we're presenting him tonight, a little bit about his background. He also brings over 30 years of experience. His experience is mixed between city management, administration, and planning, but he's got a master's in urban and regional planning. He did a lot of work in planning early in his career, and then came back to Washington after spending time in Colorado, about 20 years there, and went to Walla Walla and worked for Walla Walla County, and did a lot of work there that he can describe more articulately than I can, but essentially, he was the county's Director of Community Development. There was a merger with the city for a period of years where the city and county jointly had an agency, and he ran that agency. He also started essentially a council of governments. It was a council of governments for the Walla Walla area. He was tasked with that, and we have the Skagit Council of Governments here, so it's exactly the same kind of entity. So he had experience and background with that as well. And then most recently was the city administrator with the city of Prosser, where he was involved in economic development a fair amount. So that's a little bit of his background. He went to Eastern Washington University originally. That's where he has his bachelor's degree. And a little bit of note on his pay as well. He's in grade 132. You may recall, the council recently moved this position from grade 131 to 132. We also have him at step six. Again, three months of severance, which is standard for our directors. We have some relocation in there as well, because he's moving over from Walla Walla, and moving is not inexpensive these days. We have a relocation amount not to exceed $7,300. He has to pay that all back if he leaves within two years. That will definitely get us through the comp plan. So that's part of our thinking there. We also have an apartment above the Cedar Woolley Museum that the city owns. It's been vacant. It's been used off and on to spot usage. It's 495 square feet. I did a market analysis on it, and it doesn't really measure. It's 495 square feet. I did a market analysis on it, and it doesn't really measure up well to the market. When I think of like office space, you've got Class A office space, which is really nice stuff, you imagine. Class B, which is not so nice, and Class C, which is almost industrial space. This would be a Class C apartment. It's very much no frills, but we costed that out at $785 per month. So he would need to pay rent to live there, but that will help his transition to the city and get him set up here. He does have a school-aged child, and they're going to need to relocate, as I mentioned. So the idea is to get him started and get him started soon. He's able to start on May 1st. We had, again, members of the Planning and Business Development Committee involved from the council as well. I'm sure they can speak to his credentials, but before we go there, and his employment agreements also included with the attachments, I'd like to turn it over to Tom himself to provide an introduction and answer any questions from the council.
Thank you, Charlie. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Welcome, Tom.
Okay, great, good. Thank you. Hi, Mayor and Council. Nice to meet you all, virtually at least. Thank you very much for this invitation and the offer. I'm happy to accept it, and I'm looking forward to starting on May 1st, as Charlie mentioned. Charlie, it was quite an introduction. I'm not sure what else I can say after that, but I think, you know, when I first started looking at this position and learned about Cedar Woolley, I loved the community already. And I met your staff, some of your staff through the interview process, and some of your council, and of course, the mayor, and thought, wow, such nice people and caring people. I get the impression that you all love the city. That, to me, is an inspiration for me. So anyway, I do look forward to starting. It was interesting to listen to some of the planning issues tonight from Nicole, and I look forward to diving into those issues and resolving them as we go along. So anyway, thank you again, and I look forward to meeting all of you in person here soon.
All right, great. So I'm going to have, let's see, Nick, you were a part of that. Joe, you were a part of that, and so were you, Kevin. Do you each want to share?
I'd love to, Madam Mayor. So, yeah, it has been a year to get somebody in to fill John Coleman's shoes, but I think it's going to be well worth the time. And to get somebody that blends with the community. One of the big takeaways from the strategic planning meeting was the council had a lot of concerns with the urban growth and the densification. And one of the things that some of the council members mentioned is that, yeah, get the right director. This is part of your guy's job in interviewing the person. And so I thought he was a really good candidate, very good, best we had seen, came with the right credentials, has the Washington, the love of Washington feel, as well as being able to work with the county where he was and to work within the guidelines of the urban growth and the comprehensive plan that was set up, because they were, at the same time, in very similar shoes as us, where we're feeling the pressure of a state and being able to navigate that. So definitely the right skill set, great attitude, enjoyed the interview, and I really enjoyed that everybody else very took to you. So, thanks.
Thank you. Joe?
After participating in five interviews, I do have to say that Mr. Glover was by far my favorite candidate. I think that he brings all the experience that we need for us to navigate the state laws, work with what we have coming up in the future here, and have someone who's very effective in that role at making sure that the council and the mayor are well informed and that we are able to do a good job at it. So I really appreciated hearing his experience. As Councilmember Lavaca said, his experience with the county gives him an additional perspective, and him already having worked in Washington, he understands our comp plan process and can hit the ground running. So those are things that I really appreciated about him, and he had a wonderful demeanor. I think he will work well with us.
Excellent. Thank you. Kevin, would you like to make comment?
Yeah, I've just got a short one. He seems to me to be the type of person that can work easily with employees and our citizens. So that's a, that's a very important thing, easy to get along with, and I think that's very positive.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. Any questions for Tom? None? Okay. If there are none, then I am looking for a motion to confirm Tom Glover as the Community Development Director and authorize the mayor to enter into a employment agreement with him.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Tom Glover as our Community Develop Director.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Okay. So I have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Burns. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
We know you're in. All right. All approved. Welcome, Tom. We look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that was very exciting. Moving on then to the last item under new business, which is to add Section 9A.240.010, abuse of 911 emergency reporting systems to the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code ordinance 207224. This is a first read. Actually, this isn't the last item. We have another one after this. My apologies. Item number three.
That's, that's me.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. So, so what this is, I'm just looking for a motion to approve ordinance 207224, adding Section 9A.240.010, abuse of 911 reporting systems, and another approval to clean up a mistake in the same chapter that was found when we were doing this. This is also something that we had in the past, from ordinance number 199621, from, from before. And when we brought the RCW section title 9A, this kind of went away. We've had several instances where we could have used this in our experience. We use it very rare, but there are certain circumstances where we get calls for services that create emergency response to that, both fire and police, and it ends up not being an issue, okay? So we still respond. We still have to respond no matter what, but when it comes down to this being a chronic and a nuisance, where 911 is not necessary for this call, allows us a chance to provide a warning and offer them services otherwise prior to going this route. In my past experience in this, I've used it a few times. I can remember the people who we use it on. It's a handful of times. But those are circumstances that they are creating a severe call load to our 911 system and doing it on purpose. And that's what we're trying to affect here. We want that to stop. There are some right now that we could contact and educate on this factor and hopefully alleviate this from becoming an issue. So right now, I'm looking for a motion to approve this 911, abuse of 911 municipal code, adding to section ordinance 207224, and fixing the mistake, which was just a clerical error in there on the hotel fence. It was listed in there as 9A.240, the same one where she's in 010, and that's being crossed out.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions, comments?
Chief, so part of the reasoning for having a community paramedic was to do outreach for things like this. So is this going to, is this on its own going to alleviate that? Is this for like, if somebody calls 911 because they can't reach their remote and, you know, and all the other horror stories we've been hearing for the justification of hiring a community paramedic? Is, is this included in that?
Well, it's not going to alleviate the community paramedic. I think that's a resource that you would provide to prevent that from happening. This is another resource that we could use as of now for the persons that don't, don't listen.
Okay, so this is, this is the teeth then, right?
This is the teeth to it. So, like I said, it's going to be, be used very rarely, and we use discretion a lot, and we're out there provide, offer resources to them, both fire and police. But there are times they won't listen, and they're like, I don't care. I'm going to call anyway, and, and create the, the extra call load. That's pretty much where I'm at there, you know?
I think this is exactly what we need, and we've all kind of been, you know, waiting to be able to vote on something like this because that's, so I would make that motion to approve this.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that. Okay. All right. So we, any more discussion before we move on?
No, I'm just, thank you. I think when, when we were discussing with the chief, the fire response and how many calls were coming in from 40 people, that's a taxpayer burden on this community that is costing us a lot of money. So it would be nice to maybe, maybe see people just call when they need to call. So thank you.
So we have a motion by Councilman Henderson, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond to add Section 9A.240.010, abuse of 911 emergency reporting system to the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code, ordinance number 207224. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. All right, next item, chief, I believe is yours as well. Section, or to amend Cedar Woolley, Section 6.08.10170, cruelty to animals. This is ordinance 207424.
Nikki's going to handle this one.
All right.
So she's handing off to me, and I'm happy to talk about this. This actually comes from a request from our prosecuting attorney. They have seen an uptick, unfortunately, in cruelty to animals cases. And so what he was looking for was an increase in the penalty level. The penalties right now are set at misdemeanors, which are a lower level crime, and he's looking to increase it to a gross misdemeanor. He's also looking to incorporate the crime, or sorry, the penalties that are available in the RCWs. The RCWs have a lot broader range of penalties, including a staggered approach to prohibiting having animals for a certain amount of time after you're convicted of animal cruelty. Also, therapy and treatment program after you've been convicted, which he's particularly interested in that. And so essentially, all this is doing is allowing for a broader option, a broader range of options for sentencing and increasing the penalty from a misdemeanor to a gross misdemeanor. And he would very much appreciate a motion on that this evening if possible.
All right. Thank you, Nikki. Are there any questions for either Nikki or Chief Dan?
Madam Mayor?
Could she explain, could she explain a little better the difference between misdemeanor and gross misdemeanor?
Sure. So a misdemeanor comes with a maximum penalty of 90 days in jail and $1,000 fine. A gross misdemeanor comes with a maximum penalty of 364 days in jail or a $5,000 fine. Now, it is very rare that you would see somebody sentenced up to that maximum, but that is the range of possibilities that are available under those two types of offenses.
Yes, Councilwoman Kestie.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, since we can't impose aye for an aye, I'd be happy to make the motion to approve this.
I'll second.
Okay. Councilwoman Burns, thank you. So any other questions before I move on?
Why wouldn't we, why wouldn't it be like a felony? Can Nikki answer why?
There, yes. So there are varying levels of crimes against animals. This, what we are talking about this evening is more analogous to a animal cruelty second degree in the RCWs. First degree is a felony, right? And the city doesn't have jurisdiction over the felonies. That is prosecuted by the county. So what is within our jurisdiction is a maximum of a gross misdemeanor. So what we're doing here tonight is saying, we think this is bad enough that it needs to be the maximum that we can go after someone for.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay.
I just want to say I support this measure. Animal cruelty is abhorrent, and I think we should punish it appropriately.
All right, thank you.
And then Nikki, can you describe some of the cases that have come about from, from this? Is it, is it the feeding and watering, or is it abuse? Is it neglect?
It's all of the above, and that would be, and all of those are included in our ordinance.
Yeah, I saw that.
Those prohibitions are included. Yeah, and so Laura Carr has seen a lot of really terrible things, and I'm sure Dan could expand on the nature of some of these terrible acts.
Okay, so yeah, a lot of it's abuse, I would imagine. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. If there are no more questions, we have a motion on the table by Councilwoman Kestie, seconded by Councilman Burns. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Thank you. All right, we are going to move into our public comment time. Public comment is three minutes. We ask that you give your first name and maybe your relationship to the city. So is there anybody here in the council who would like to make public comment? All right. Mr. Murray?
My name's Philip Murray. I don't believe my question was answered from the last city council meeting. I was asking how the city has the right to spend taxpayers' money on maintaining railroad right-of-way, that is private property. You didn't answer that question. You went around it. Who, who owns that right-of-way?
Railroad.
Because you seem to think you own it because you tell people to go ahead and park on it. Businesses, I was here when Aaron Berg was telling, you have to park on the railroad right-of-way. You put certain business, this bar, park on the railroad right-of-way. It's not the city's to do. There's contracts on that property that say for the construction, maintenance, and operation. When that disappears, that easement is gone, and it does not revert to the city because it is not the city's property. It belongs to people. Just like you said, the county owns on the other side of Jameson, there's other properties that are owned by people. That property reverts to the property owner adjacent. Does not revert to the government. And I would still like an answer. How come you can spend taxpayers' money? I have pictures of the city on this property, piling up dirt and everything. Today, they're out there mowing with a big brush cutter on it. Who's authorizing this? Who has the authority to authorize this? I mean, it comes down to the mayor having to authorize this work on railroad property. I'm tired of paying for it. I've been maintaining in front of me because I am the adjacent property owner. I've maintained for this, the car lot property, because they are the adjacent property owners. I've maintained it for Mark Eden. That's his property, too. You're taking property rights away from people. You're trying to create adverse possession. The library, you put rocks out there, you put topsoil, you plant a grass on railroad property. What gives you the right to do that? The other thing is, you need an HR person. Well, you have a city attorney. I don't know what the, how much does he, how much are the city attorney bills for a year? I was told somewhere around $150,000. You can hire a full-time city attorney. Then your payroll person can work together with them as the HR person. You're spending the same amount of money, and you're alleviating an extra person that you don't have to hire then. I have a lot more, but I'll get it the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to make public comment? Anybody online? Turn your mic on or raise a hand. All right, seeing none. It is 7:48. I'm going to close public comment, and we have come down towards the end of our meeting. I do want to point out to the council that there is some information-only items that are listed, and they have to do with the police staff report, very extensive, very good, and also Police Proposition 1 summary. So for those of you who had questions regarding the funding that came in for Proposition 1 summary, it is listed there. The council is now going to move into executive session. Two items we are going to discuss. The first is property acquisition, RCW 42.30.1101B, and the second is a discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation, RCW 42.30.1101I. And we will be, we're coming up on the eight o'clock hour. And we will be, we're coming up on the eight o'clock hour with council's permission, if we go a little longer, either five or 10 after eight, are you all okay with that? So we will come back, we'll give ourselves about 20 minutes, and we will be back here at 7:10, or 8:10.
Madam Mayor, I thought the council voted a long time ago that we would just push backs anything, but it seems like we keep going to this eight o'clock and then a cutoff for a request to see if we can go past that. Aren't we already, isn't it already in our municipal code that we would just take as long as it takes?
I also want to-
They would have voted that before, before my turn, but I think I remember that.
I believe in the council governance handbook. It says that anything past eight o'clock requests a motion by the council to go beyond that.
I'd make a motion that we stay till the job's done, then.
Well, for the, for the, that's great. So for executive session, though, it is 7:50 right now. We will take 20 minutes, we'll come back at 8:10. All right, thank you. Okay. We are back from executive session, and decision was made regarding the property acquisition, but no decision regarding the legal counsel. So, with that, if there is nothing for the good of the order, we are adjourned. Thank you.